A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item of business, reports of city officers, starting with myself. I really have three things to mention tonight. One is on Friday, one of the biggest Lake Forest events every year is the tree lighting ceremony. But it's not just the tree lighting at 5:00 o'clock. It starts at 1:00 o'clock with the movie Home Alone, shown at Gorton for free on the big screen. 3:00 there's live ice sculpting performance and holiday arts and crafts for kids. 3:30 to 5:00, Santa Claus is making a very special early appearance in Lake Forest. At 4:30, we have caroling by the Lake Forest High School choristers. 5:00, the Lake Forest Dance Academy performance, and then the switch is pulled. So, and the weather seems to be with us, 45 to 48 degrees, little chance of rain. I'm told by the Public Works Department who will be held accountable for the weather. Another item is, as we've stated before, but I think we're all very focused on this, or several of us are, the fundraising for support of the enhanced solution to the North Beach Access Road is going very well. And we will, as we've stated before, have a full report on December 3rd as to that endeavor. And lastly, also on December the 3rd, the mayor, myself, expects to appoint a new city manager. The process to identify and select a new city manager has been rolling along on time, on schedule, and we've been very fortunate to have a large number of very qualified candidates. And on December 3rd will be, it's like a whole new chapter, a whole new era in Lake Forest with a new city manager. With that, I'll turn it over to the city manager, Bob Kiley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I have three operational reports this evening. The council knows from past reports and a lot of budgetary discussions, the city is engaged in a new ERP system software update. And up to this point in time, most of the work has been sort of internal, affecting general ledger systems and some of our internal financial accounting software systems. But now we're starting to roll out new modules, and tonight we're going to hear about the utility billing and also building permit inspection services. So with us is Elizabeth Hollab, our Director of Finance, and making all kinds of noises over there. And Kathy Zerniak will then talk about the new building permit inspectional review software.
Okay, thank you very much, City Manager Kiley. We wanted to give you a brief update on utility billing because that is really the first ERP module that has a significant impact on residents. So we have been very busy. Last week, we went live officially on the utility billing module on Monday, November 13th. Last week, what we did internally was run a parallel billing. So we essentially replicated the November billing in both the prior system and the current system to go through and verify that we were getting the same calculations in both systems and proof that we were calculating the bills correctly in the new system. So that has been complete. Staff internally also received implementation and training on the online services. So while we've had online services available through HTE, we're going to have expanded services available with BSNA, so we trained staff on that. And then we've also been in the process of changing our bill print vendor. So with the change from HTE to BSNA, we're also changing the vendor who prints and mails out our bills. So we've been working with that vendor to confirm that everything is transferring correctly and the bill print looks correct. So this week, we had several meetings today to just kind of finalize all the details. We'll be mailing the November bills out this week, so if you're in cycle two and typically receive a mailing, you'll receive the first bill officially from the BSNA system. And we will also have BSNA staff on site continuing through this week and next week. So they will be here from today through Thursday, November 29th, available for staff to assist residents to tackle any questions or issues that come up related to training or customer support. So it's a very exciting time. To talk just a little bit about the enhancements, so you're going to see a few changes to the actual bill print. One of the exciting changes we're excited about is that it's actually going to have a usage chart. So if you think a little bit about your comm ed bills for electricity, it's going to have a similar usage chart for the last 18 months for that account. So people will be able to see how that particular quarter bill compares to the same quarter for the prior year. So that is going to be a great addition. We're also expanding our payment methods. So with our partner, Invoice Cloud and BSNA, we're going to be able to offer pay by text and pay by phone in addition to by mail, in the office, and online. And then the online services will be on one-time payments. So residents will be able to go on without registering and make a one-time payment on their account. But if they'd like to schedule payments, if they would like to have recurring credit card payments or recurring ACH debit set up, they'll have the ability to register and have that set up, and that registration will store that credit card or banking information. Residents will have either through no registration or registration, the ability to look up the history of their account. They'll be able to reprint a bill. And they'll have their account activity up to 10 years. So they've had an account here in Lake Forest for 10 years. They'll be able to go back 10 years and see their activity. So the biggest question is, what do I need to do if I'm a resident? We are asking residents to first wait until they get their first bill. So we'll have, because of our quarterly billing cycles, those first bills will roll out in November, December, and January. And that will allow us to kind of phase in the transition with a third of the community in each month. So if residents wait until they receive their first bill, if they are currently enrolled in e-bill, electronic e-billing, they will receive their first bill via email. So that information has transferred over to the new system, and they'll continue to receive their bill via email. If they receive it in the mail, they'll get it in the mail. On the bill, they will have, you'll all have a new account number. So part of the transition was reassigning account numbers for everyone, and that new account number is what's going to be important to registering and looking up your information online. If you're currently enrolled in the billing, it's just a notation that the new bill will arrive from that address, no reply, at invoicecloud.net, which is the business partner that is providing us the online services through BSNA. And then one-time payments, viewing history, reprint bill, no registration. Once you have a bill, you'll be able to go onto the city's website, go to the utility billing section, enter your new account number, and you'll be able to view all that information online, and you'll also be able to make a one-time payment from that location. If you however want to set up the recurring, then there will be another location that you'll be able to click and go through the registration process with Invoice Cloud. And we're going to have step-by-step instructions. So just go to the city's website. If you go to the services section of the homepage, go down to utility billing. Right now it says water billing. We're taking this as an opportunity to move everything over on the webpages from water billing to utility billing. And then when you click on utility billing, there'll be detailed instructions on how to set up and get going. Any questions? Okay, we're excited.
And Catherine Zerniak, Director of Community Development, will report on the ERP implementation as it affects new building permits and inspection software.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I expect we'll hit a few more bumps than finance and IT. Hard act to follow. So we will go live with our permitting and inspection software the first week in December. But we've been doing a lot behind the scenes, and I wanted to give you a bit of an overview of what we've been doing. In June, we began meeting with BSNA representatives. And I remember during the vendor selection process, our finance director made the point of really considering how the vendor was going to help us through the implementation process. And community development staff have absolutely been impressed by BSNA representatives. In June, we began to meet them. We've developed relationships with them. And what's really important is that they are not just tech people. Most of the representatives that we're working with have worked in municipalities. They've worked in community development departments. So they know the system from both sides. So with every organization that they work with on implementation, they're able to bring in their expertise and really create experts in our department. So the vendor selection, I think, was right on point, at least based on our experience. They talk our language, which has been really important. So we got to know our representatives. We spent a lot of time talking about our current processes. We looked back at the report, the evaluation of the community development department that was done about a year ago, completed May 1st, and really looked at where our weaknesses were and where our strengths were. We talked about our frustrations with the current system. Our current permit processing system is over 20 years old, so it's antiquated. And we also let each of our staff members talk about their vision, things that they've talked with other staff members and other organizations about, things that they've seen done, things that they just think could be done. And I think rather than dragging people along with this change, people really had long anticipated and actually long requested this type of a software upgrade. So I think from that perspective, we had a good kickoff. In July and August, we began process discussions, meeting again directly with BSNA representatives, reviewing the various modules, inspections, permit review, business licenses, of which our city clerk, Biddy Boyer, is the module lead, code enforcement. And I know there's something else, but I'm forgetting it. So we talked about what opportunities exist. BSNA came back to us and said, "You talked about frustration with this or a vision to do this. Here's what we have to offer, and here are some opportunities over and beyond what you've talked about." And at that time, we began to have bi-weekly status calls. So even though BSNA representatives weren't in the office with us every week, we were talking with them every other week. They had given us assignments, how to cull through some of our data and keep an ongoing communication. In September and October, we began intensive training and went through several sequences of data transfer. There are about 2,500 active permits that are being dumped into the new system, and they won't dump in cleanly. So those will continue to be a challenge. We're not going back. We made the decision to not go back and re-enter everything. We will work with those till we get those through the process. We had warm-up and implementation training. We came together as an entire department. Others covered our front counter responsibilities, and we're able to have a full department discussion. Later, BSNA onsite was there and met with staff that are involved in each of the modules, each of the subject areas. And then there was one-on-one training that began back in September and October. Our bi-weekly status calls continued throughout that time. We continued to send BSNA our updated building permit applications, our checklists, our form letters, our public notices, so that those could all be entered into the system to facilitate moving from paper to digital. In November, which is where we are now, about a week, I guess it was last week, individuals from our department met with, again, BSNA representatives onsite. And when they come onsite, they're there for a full week, three or four days, full days, met onsite and reviewed the data that BSNA had entered into the system and said, "No, that doesn't quite jive with the code requirement," or, but actually sat down and went through all these details. Later on your agenda, on the omnibus agenda, you have a recommendation to adopt updated state and national building codes. Those codes are adopted currently, but now is a perfect time to adopt those updated versions because we can put those references right into this new BSNA system and be current with other communities, with the county. The county, Mannickburn, Lake Bluff, we share responsibility for plan reviews and inspections. So that works very well. And again, various pieces are coming together right now. We're continuing the bi-weekly status calls. I know there was a module lead meeting this morning with Elizabeth. So that's what we've done to date. It's been exhausting, but I think we're beginning to see the light at the end of the tunnel.
Top of everything else.
Timeline looking forward, the end of November, the week, I guess it's next week, BSNA will be back onsite for the full week, and they will go through pre-go-live training with us. The first week in December and the second week in December, since we're going live on December 3rd, BSNA will be there, holding our hands, working with our customers, answering any questions, and making sure we can make that full transition. By mid-December, when we're all experts on the system, we have identified a pilot group of our customers, architects and contractors, who we will be doing some testing with. And then mid-January, we plan to offer open customer training, residents, contractors, other communities. And we'll hold those trainings at municipal services and walk through exactly how to use all the features. And then importantly, there's ongoing support from BSNA. We talked recently about the fact that our annual backflow certification program doesn't occur until March or April of each year. And our staff said, "Well, you know, you're not going to be around. What are we going to do?" And they said, "We're going to be around. You call us when you're ready to go live with that piece of it. When your annual letters will go out, we will be there to support you." So we have experts who are supporting us, and those experts with BSNA, I am confident, are going to really make us very comfortable with this system. And then what to expect with building permits? We will be doing online submittal of applications. We will be accepting credit card payments, which was, is something we don't currently do and was something that, as part of the study a year ago, there was a significant number of people who would like to do that, credit card payments, both at the counter and online. Some permits will be able to be issued. People can push, print them off at home, depending on the permits. If it's a typical roof replacement with no change, they'll be able to submit and get approval and issue the permit right at home. When a permit is issued, when a permit application is issued and plans come in, each category of staff that is required to review that particular type of permit will get an immediate alert by email. Today, what happens is the plans get copied, and each of the staff who need to do the review get a paper copy of those plans. Digital plan submission, although we do that now, this will really make it more broadly available. For the hospital project, for example, we were able to work with their software, and we were able to receive their plans digitally, do the reviews digitally, see real-time changes. So we have the advantage of having experience with that. But this will make it available to the common person. There will be pre-entered plan review comments. So if there's typical comments, for instance, about wall bracing, there's some new code requirements with wall bracing. Those comments are often put on plans with a sticker or handwritten. This will be as simple as clicking a checklist of what pre-entered plan review comments need to be annotated to any particular set of plan. We've taken this opportunity to streamline our application forms. If you've applied for a permit, you may recall that you had a, the property owner had to sign an electrical permit application, a plumbing permit application. In HVAC, there is now a streamlined form. Property owners will still need to sign, but need to sign only once. What to expect with inspections? Currently, our inspections can be scheduled using an automated phone system that is confusing and cumbersome, and again, is 20 years old. Many people just call us. There will be an online inspection scheduling system. Won't prevent people from calling if they want a personal touch there. Again, there will be pre-entered inspection results. Our inspectors have already transitioned from iPads to tablets. Tablets work with this system, so they've been out in the field getting used to their tablets. And they will be able to go through a home, doing an inspection, and for the most part, check any comments that apply. There'll certainly be the opportunity to add unique comments for any particular project. There will be a direct link for those inspectors out in the field to the permit application, the plans, and to our state, national, and local codes. The system will take any particular inspector's site visits for the day and give them a suggested route, which will be interesting to see if that's more efficient or if there's other ways. But it will suggest what is most efficient from a mileage standpoint. And homeowners and contractors will receive immediate notification of inspection results by email. A few more things. Currently, our code enforcement process is not digital at all. It's paper. So our code enforcement process will be automated. Again, form letters have been submitted to BSNA. Those will easily be able to be completed. There'll be an ability to track compliance. If someone's given 10 days to complete something, that, once that 10-day period is up, the code enforcement officer will receive an alert of that. Boards and commissions, online submittal of applications will be possible. Currently, we accept online applications, but anything we receive, we have to re-enter. So anything that a homeowner enters in an application form will automatically be entered. It'll just have to be entered once. There won't be a duplication of effort. Online payment will be possible, and notices for public hearings will also be automated. Finally, there will be increased and more flexible reporting capabilities. Currently, our system does not have a way, without doing some hand counting of tracking how many days particular permits take to issue. So that's taken a lot of time. And importantly, data for all, for each address will be centralized. So if we're entering a building permit, we don't have to check somewhere else to see if there's a code violation, to see if we haven't received a septic system certification, to see if there's some other kind of note on the property. So that will all be in one place. Several of our processes currently, as I mentioned, are completely manual right now. Our annual certification for backflows, septic systems and elevators are all manual. We've worked with BSNA to find a way to fit those into one of the modules. Same with annual license, our health licenses for restaurants, electrical contractor and heating licenses. Again, those will all be automated and should simplify the process. Finally, what will not change is that we are committed to continuing to offer exceptional customer service. Sometimes it's that personal touch that can't be replaced by the internet. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Wow. Congratulations for your steadfast efforts and good cheer at doing this. I'm sure it's plenty hard. And I'd like the last note, customer service. At the end of the day, it's about the customer. So terrific.
Thank you, Kathy. And then the third and final report is from Police Chief Carl Waldorf to discuss the new Smart 911 rollout, which some of you are familiar with the code RED or reverse 911 system that currently is in place. And this is something that we've been working on with our centralized dispatch operation.
Good evening. Many of you are aware, when we first began discussing consolidating dispatch services, that one of the strong reasons in favor of doing so was the ability of a larger dispatch center to leverage technology that we probably wouldn't as a smaller operation here in Lake Forest, and this is a pretty good example. Glenview has rolled out this product. It's called Smart 911. It's available right now, and it's active right now. And essentially, what it is at its heart is the ability for you to, for free, create a database of information that you would like transmitted to first responders in the event you call 911 from any phone number that you program into your account. So the most obvious one is from your cell phone. So at its most basic level, you can create an account that has at the very least your cell phone number and your name and address. And then every time you call 911 from that cell phone, Glenview dispatchers will immediately see that information as soon as the call comes in, okay? But the system's a lot more robust, and I'll go through that as we go along here. There's two ways to set up an account. Either, any way you do it, it's free, and it's very easy to do. It took me about five minutes to do my whole family the first time I sat down with it. The first location is the website, which is just smart911.com. You go right in there. You create a password, just like any online shopping site. And then you start filling out a bunch of fields, and so we'll go on to that. There's also an app at all the app stores, and I put the icons on there for both the Google Store and the Apple Store is the bottom left one. Again, free to download, and the account is free. There's never any charge to you. It's actually Glenview paying on the backend for the service. So either way you begin setting up an account, it has dozens and dozens of fields that you can fill out or not fill out at your discretion. Like I said, at its base level, you can just give it your name, your address, and if you call 911 from your cell, it'll also give your location to dispatch. So that's the basic service. But it has a robust set of fields that you can fill out, and this example here is showing off some of the medical information that you can pre-populate. Now, this only goes to dispatch when you call from any of the phone numbers on your account. If you never call, they never see it, okay? So let's say someone in your house suffers from Alzheimer's, okay? You can program anyone in your household into the account or your extended family because you can associate different people in your account to different addresses and different phone numbers. But if you have anyone who suffers from any kind of medical issue, you can push that information to dispatch right away. And that's a huge, a huge bonus for these people when they're responding because a lot of times it takes some time to gather. lot of times, it takes some time to gather that information. And a lot of times, if the only person on scene is either, who called, is either someone who doesn't know the patient that well, or it's the patient themselves, but they can't talk well, et cetera, et cetera, all the information can be pre-populated here. If you have small children, you'll notice this person who's, I'm sure it's not a real account, but this person's populated with a picture, which is an option. So you can put in a picture for every member of your family. If you have children or grandchildren that stay with you, and they may get lost, which we get that call several times a month, our dispatcher can immediately steal that picture right off the account, email it to all the officers who are responding, and now, within a minute of getting the 911 call, we have a picture of the missing child versus trying to get a physical description. As you might expect, if it's early release from school and the kid's missing in the Market Square area, there's going to be 300 kids there, so it's helpful to have a picture. But obviously, everybody's family is a little different. And so, really, the heart of this is you can customize the account with whatever information you think someone might need to help. As is usual, for me, when I was online, it's heavily favored towards medical information, but it also has a robust set of fields for miscellaneous information. So if you have any problems on the criminal justice side, so say, for example, someone in your family has an order of protection against someone, you could put that information right in, so it's available to dispatchers right when they call. On some domestic incidents, for example, some folks don't want to talk when they call. All this information can pop right up, that they've had problems with so-and-so, they've been stalked by an ex-boyfriend. All that information can go right in the miscellaneous fields. And so, what we're trying to do, starting now and probably going on, you know, into the distant future, is trying to get as many people to sign up as possible. So if I could, I'd like to ask you, all of you, and I'll be back in January to talk about an associated product with that, just to try it at home for yourselves, so that you can be, you know, advocates for it. It's really a great product. It's really leveraging that technology that we hoped when we consolidated with, you know, with a larger center.
Yeah. Wow. Another wow. The future is here.
Yeah.
I mean, this, wow, just thinking, so many circumstances, this could save an enormous amount of time.
Right.
And be more accurate in the
Right.
... delivery of service.
So Chief, we can sign up members of our family who may be off to college or something?
Sure, absolutely. And this doesn't just work at Glenview. It works with any community in the United States.
That was my next question.
Which supposedly, their subscriber base covers 45 million people. It's sort of new to Lake County. So it's Glenview's communities, 18-plus towns have it now. Cook County Sheriff has it, so their entire jurisdiction is covered. There's not a lot of jurisdictions outside of those covered by Glenview and Lake County yet, but it's clearly, you know, it's clearly an advancing product.
Well, so, am I understanding correctly that if I have a daughter who's in college in Colorado, that
Right.
... the people in Colorado would be able to access this?
If they're subscribers to
To.
... the service themselves. And you can check that by going on the website, putting in the zip code, and they'll tell you what emergency centers around that zip code are subscribers right now. So, but putting in the information, if it, if the town that she's calling 911 from doesn't subscribe, you're still having regular 911 service. You know what I mean?
Right.
So you're just missing that added benefit. But you, you know, this is the kind of thing that grows very quickly.
Yeah. Great. Wow.
One of the added benefits for the service will come into play, really, in 2019. Many of you are aware, we've been using Code Red as an emergency notification service for many years now. In 2019, Glenview will be switching to a new notification service called Rave Alert. Rave Alert is owned by the same parent company as Smart 911. So what this will allow us to do is also, if you check a box when you create your account, it'll allow that information to go to the emergency notification side as well. The other benefit to the Rave Alert system, which we didn't have when we started Code Red, is we have a pre-built-in database with Rave Alert, which is our water billing system. So when we started Code Red, some of you may remember, we had nothing. We had to build that database over time. And it has grown to several thousand now, but Rave Alert, just coming in and being able to import our water billing, will have a bigger database than Code Red does even now, years after we implemented it.
Great.
And I'll be back to talk about Rave Alert in January.
Interesting.
I had a question. Along the lines of the Rave Alert, remember a couple of years ago, we had a derailment of some cars north of Deer Path Road there that had some sulfur? It wasn't particularly hazardous, but are we going to get to a level where notification of that derailment or road closings or things like that can be pushed out to those people who want it?
Sure, we can do that notification even now with Code Red, and we'd certainly be able to do it with Rave Alert, too. Really, the decision we make when we make a mass notification is, we know with any mass notification, we're going to overwhelm our dispatch center with 911 calls for curiosity calls. That's what we call them. So people are calling just to find out more information. If we don't have a course of action that we want them to take, for example, avoid this area, or stay in your home and lock your house, or evacuate the area, we generally will not send out an emergency notification just for informational purposes. Does that make sense? Just because we need to be able to preserve the dispatcher's ability to function in their system.
Sure.
Good question.
Any other questions to the chief?
Well, thank you. That's marvelous.
And that completes my report for this evening.
Thank you. Next item of business is committee reports, starting with the Finance Committee. And Elizabeth Hollum, the City Finance Director, will take us through the consideration of an ordinance establishing the 2018 tax levy, the first reading thereof. Elizabeth?
Thank you very much. As noted, the first item of a few items budget-related this evening, the 2018 property tax levy. So the City Council has, in a few capacities, reviewed this proposed tax levy on three previous occasions. No changes have been made for this evening's presentation from the estimate that was provided at the last City Council meeting. But there are some schedules in the City Council packet related to the levy that I just thought might be interesting to note for you first. The first attachment, one, is really just showing the current projected EAV for the city. These are estimates provided by the county. And so, what you see on this chart is that they are currently projecting a 1.39% increase in the total EAV of the city over last year. So a fairly modest increase. Obviously, each property will vary. This is just an average for the citywide EAV. The next schedule, attachment two, provides a very detailed line item of the levy as it is built, the different funds and the different purposes, showing the extended levy from 2017 compared to the 2018 proposed levy, both a dollar increase and percentage increase over the prior year. The top half are all levy line items that are subject to PTAL, the Property Tax Extension Limitation Law. As a home rule entity, the city is not subject to that, but we do try to stick to the tax cap wherever possible. And as noted in previous discussions, you can see that most of those line items are a 2.1% increase, which is the tax cap applicable to 2018 levies. Where you see a variance of the 2.1 is in the police pension and fire pension. So those increases are based on the independent actuarial assessed valuation as of 4/3018 and the recommended contribution based on the city's pension funding policy. And then, what you can see in the middle line is this subtotal of the total levy under the tax cap, and you can see that because of the fire and police pension levies going up slightly more than the 2.1%, the total aggregate applicable to the tax cap is a 2.42% increase compared to the 2.1 tax cap. The next subsection are the bond funds. This is all debt service related to bond issues that have previously been approved by the City Council and are being paid from the property tax levy. And so, you can see that based on scheduled increases in debt service, that total debt service levy increases over 2017. And then, the last subsection below are those levies that, under state statute, are excluded from tax cap calculations. So there is a portion of the fire pension levy that, based on changes in the statutory requirements several years ago, a portion of that is exempt from the tax cap under state statute requirements, so you can see that amount there. Special recreation is limited only by rate in state statute, not by the tax cap. So, but you can see that the proposed levy for special recreation is in compliance with the 2.1% cap. And then, new growth. So that's an estimate provided by the county on new valuation that is not subject in its initial year to the tax cap. And we've got the projected new growth tax levy of about 132,000. Then you see the grand total increase is a 3.1 with everything being included. And then, the other measure that we calculate and we've presented at a previous meeting is the aggregate levy under truth and taxation. You can see that calculated increase is 2.87% under the 5% limitation without public notice and public hearing, but that's just a calculation that we make to comply with that statutory provision. The next schedule takes all the numbers from the previous, but then it starts to take the excluded amounts from the bottom into their respective categories. So you see new growth from the previous table is split between the general fund and the library operating levy. That is done on a prorated basis, and that is how new growth has historically been handled by the city. You see the special recreation move up into the park and recreation-related line items. And then, the federal, the fire pension levy is the total amount with the excluded amount included in that line item. The last schedule, attachment four, is just the projected impact on an average household. So we take the total assessed valuation, we calculate the percentage increase from the county's estimate in attachment one, and we try to forecast the impact on the tax rate and how that tax rate will affect an average home of 800,000 market value in the city. You can see that that calculation shows an $87 increase or 2.64% on an average household. And just noting that that $87 is the city and library combined portion, which is about 22% of the total tax bill. So it doesn't forecast or project what other taxing districts impacts might be on that tax levy. The last slide is just a chart to show the distribution of the property tax levy to various purposes or categories. Funds, 46% of the total tax levy dollars go into the general operating fund to fund the operating budget for most departments of the city. And then, you can see the proportion to pension is about 17%. Parks and Recreation, 16%. Capital Improvements, the library, 4.17 million represents about 13% of the total city levy. And then, we have a small amount for debt service being funded from property taxes. So for this evening, you have a tax levy ordinance, and it is requested that the City Council consider first reading of that tax levy ordinance. This item is on the Budget Workshop Agenda next Monday, November 26th, if you have any additional questions. And then, this levy ordinance would be back on December 3rd for the Council's consideration of final approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I realize that the amount is small and, but on the bond fund, the bonds 2010, 2013, the increase is 12.69%, the change. Why is it so big? Is it principal repayments?
No. So what we do is when we do schedule the debt service for new bond issues, we do that within the total aggregate. So probably, what happened at the time was another bond issue was falling off, and so they just, we plucked in the principal to fit within that. So we try in aggregate to keep it fairly constant over time. So I would suspect that if you looked at previous year's schedules, there was probably another bond issue that had a higher principal payment, and that's falling off, and so now there's more room to pluck in the other debt service on the other issues. And then, 2017 was a new, or 2015 was a new issue, and so we're still seeing that debt service kind of ramp up to what its normal level will be.
Okay. And one other question, if I may. Could you review again for us the, why the pension funds are split between portion included and portion excluded?
So interestingly, it only relates to fire and not police, but several years ago, there were some statutory changes at the state level in Springfield regarding benefits to fire pension, pensionees. And so, as part of that negotiation in Springfield, if you will, because that was going to have a financial impact on employers, they agreed to leave a portion of that outside the tax cap calculation, recognizing the financial impact that it was going to have on employers.
That is a statewide, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, is there any questions or comments from those in the audience tonight? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to grant first reading of the ordinance establishing the 2018 tax levy.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Newman.
Aye.
Alderman Rumel.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlach.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Eight yeas, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. Relatedly, we next have approval of ordinances abating the 2018 tax levies for various general obligation alternate revenue bond issues. This is a first reading and also presented by Elizabeth Hollum.
Thank you very much. So these ordinance presented for first reading approval this evening relate to the debt service section that you just saw on these schedules. Historically, the city has issued all of its debt as general obligation debt, which means that it has the backing of the full faith and credit of the city and receives a lower interest rate because of the city's AAA bond rating. However, when those bonds are issued, there are, there are times in which other revenue sources are intended to pay that debt service. So we have a number of bond issues. You can see them listed on this table. All the current bond issues are here. This is what the county would levy without abatement ordinances being approved and filed with the county. So this reflects the total debt service that the city will have in fiscal year 20. The next column show the alternate revenue sources that apply to individual issues to fund a portion or all of the annual principal and interest payments for those issues. So each year, the City Council is asked to adopt these abatement ordinances, which is essentially reducing the amount of taxes to be levied for debt service related to the 2018 property tax levy. And then, this net amount is the amount that you would have seen on the previous schedule when you saw the bond fund section. I did receive a question about the loss cost here, the 1%. That is added by the county. What they do on debt service levies is add a 1% for non-payment to ensure that a taxing district receives the full amount they need to pay the principal and interest required on bond obligations. And so, they will adjust that 1% and not levy the 1% on the abatement portions, but what you can see here is the difference in our adopted property tax levy versus what they will actually extend to make up for any potential non-payments. So there are seven individual abatement ordinances in your packet and recommended for first reading approval this evening.
Thank you. With final approval, December 3rd.
Exactly.
Any questions, comments on this? Any questions or comments from those in the audience? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve ordinances for abating the 2018 tax levies for various general obligation alternate revenue bond issues.
So moved.
I can.
This is a roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Newman.
Aye.
Alderman Rumel.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlach.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Eight yeas, zero nay. Motion carries.
Okay. Next, staying on budgetary matters, is consideration of an ordinance approving a fee schedule and ordinance adopting new fees related to public works. This is a first reading and also presented by Elizabeth Hollum, Director of Finance.
Thank you again. So before you, on this particular item, are two ordinances. First, an ordinance approving First, an ordinance approving a fee schedule with a number of modified fees proposed with the Exhibit A, and a second ordinance adopting a new fee requested by Public Works. The Exhibit A to the ordinance adopting a fee schedule is about 18 pages. It has a lot of detail. What we do is color code that to help identify the specific changes. The changes highlighted in green are not changes. They are either clarifications from city code, or in some cases, they are new fees that the city council approved earlier this year, and we are now just incorporating it into the fee schedule. Those that are highlighted in yellow are those that are proposed increases in the current fee, and you can see the current fee and the proposed fee with the percentage change and the dollar amount of annual revenue anticipated from that change. And the third are items in orange, so there are only, there is only one new fee proposed for this year, and that is the second ordinance that you have related to public works with the water meter contractor bond. So I've not included all the individual line items, but in this table, just kind of summarized the more significant categories of fee adjustments. So you see at first, the water meter contractor bond, it would be in the general fund, but it is refunded with return of the meter, and so it does not generate additional revenue. Parks and Recreation, they have proposed changes in golf course fees that would be deposited to the golf course fund and are projected to increase revenue by just under $48,000. In Parks and Recreation, there are three different categories of fees recommended for change, an increase in the park picnic permits with an annual revenue increase of 2,375. Boat and beach, so lakefront-related fees, proposed adjustments aggregating with an annual revenue increase of just under $16,000. And adjustments to fitness center fees with an annual revenue adjustment of $9,600. And then I would just note that highlighted in blue on the Exhibit A are the water fees. We will be discussing those in detail at the Budget Workshop next Monday, so they are not yet incorporated, and those based on the discussion next Monday would be brought back in January for approval. So the recommendation this evening is to grant first reading both to the ordinance adopting the fee schedule with the proposed changes, as well as the ordinance adopting a new fee related to public works.
Any questions, comments? There's a lot to these tables.
Stepping away from the specifics, for the proposed increases, would you share philosophy? Is it inflation? Is it usage? Is it labor fully loaded? How, what's the methodology?
Sure. So we, as we begin each budget process each year, we ask the operating departments to review their fees. And there is a wide range of methodologies involved. We ask them to look at the cost of providing the service and try to balance that fee with the cost to the city to provide that, but also keeping in mind comparables. So we ask them to look at, how does that fee compare to what other communities are charging? Is it, is it still in line? There are fees that typically increase every year simply with inflation. We do that with water rates. You see that typically with parks and recreation fees, just to recognize the inflationary costs that they see in providing those recreation programs. But it, I would say that there's a lot of differentiation between the different methodologies that are used, depending on what, what the fee is being assessed to recover. So that is why we provide you the supplemental memos. So I forgot to add that you also have about 30 pages in additional information from each department, kind of explaining the basis for the recommendations on the fee adjustments. But most of them, I would say, are inflationary based on the fact that it's personnel, and personnel costs are increasing, and so the fee needs to increase to continue to cover that cost.
Thank you.
It includes new things, and I particularly note small wireless facilities. So 5G is coming to Lake Forest, so all a matter of time. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience with comments or questions about this matter? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the ordinance for this fee schedule and the ordinance adopting new fees related to public works.
So moved.
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Newman.
Aye.
Alderman Rummel.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlach.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Eight yeas, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item business is opportunity for citizens to address the city council on non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to do that? Seeing none, move to the next item, which are items for omnibus vote consideration. We have seven tonight. Approval of the November 5th city council meeting minutes, authorization to purchase Nowood Fire Engine 44, and assume an AFG grant for fire truck 44. Approval of a public right-of-way dedication for the Everett-Waugnian Intersection Improvement Project. Approval of all city expenditures and contractor recommendations for the Waukegan Road Sidewalk Project. Fifth, approval of two agreements with ACOM and ratification of expenses incurred for forest, park, bluff evaluation assistance, and virtual renderings in the amount of $14,350. Sixth, consideration of adoption of updated versions of the previously adopted state and national life safety and building codes. This is a first reading thereof. Number seven, consideration of ordinances approving recommendations from the Building Review Board. This is also a first reading, and if desired by council, final approval. As we do, we can consider any one of these separately, but short of that, any particular questions, comments on these? All fairly straightforward city business. With that, I have a motion to approve the omnibus items as presented.
So moved.
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Newman.
Aye.
Alderman Rummel.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlach.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Eight yeas, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is new business, which is award of bid for a four-year building sidewalk snow and ice service contract to the service, to service innovators in an annual estimated amount of $60,000, presented by Dan Martin, Superintendent of Public Works. Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, member of city council. Yes, tonight will be, staff will be seeking authorization to enter into a four-year agreement with building sidewalk snow and ice control. As far as the sidewalk, building sidewalks in snow, it falls under the, is one of the main components under the main snow and ice control under Public Works that, so these sidewalks, particularly these seven that we'll be talking about, need to get done about the same time that we're plowing roads and plowing, you know, parking lots, doing all the other snow responses at that time. All the hand shoveling program was completed all in-house prior to 2015. The program utilizes mostly seasonal temporary employees. In the summer of 2015, the seasonal employees, we basically went through a budget reduction, which caused a shift in the 11-month employee as being in a seasonal, moving to a nine-month. So the seasonals worked 11 months, and they were off for a month. Then they were eligible after that one month off to come back for 11 months. We didn't always bring them back then, but they were eligible to do that. Now they can only work a maximum of nine months and then have to have three months off. So that left a gap, and what it also did is it shifted the priority to have to take those seasonal hours and really put them to where a lot of the priority for seasonal workers are, is that is the spring, summer, and fall months. So doing that, having that happen in Public Works, we went ahead and started a pilot program for contractual shoveling in order to address the workforce reductions. Out of the 18 hand shoveling locations, the seven primary, and there's 11 secondaries. The primaries are the ones that we put under contract. And as I earlier mentioned, those are the ones that are locations that have a high amount of activity in public usage on a regular basis, and that need to be addressed accordingly many times at the same time as we're out plowing snow. So the seven primary locations contracted for snow and ice clearing services has worked out very well, and so we continued that pilot program into a regular program, and here we are trying to get a renewal contract. Here are the seven locations that, the primaries that are under contract. You can see the rec center, LOA, the cemetery, mentioned a few of them. Moving into the bid tab, you can see here, the invitations to bid went out on October 11th. In addition to that, we also invited 13, or sent the invitation to 13 additional contractors that have either bid before or local that we know that do that type of building hand shoveling. So we received four bids on October 25th, Kaplan, the Service Innovators, Snow Systems, and Proven Snow and Ice Control. It must, should be noted that apparent low bidder Kaplan, although they turned in their bid a day before, they submitted it unsealed. Staff saw Kaplan's unsealed bid, the day of the bid, the morning of the bid opening, prior to the bid opening, notified Kaplan that they needed to have that in a sealed envelope. And they came back with an envelope, sealed it, and submitted it to the bid opening. Unfortunately, it was six minutes late, and it's 10:06 after the bid deadline. Because Kaplan's bid was submitted past the deadline, city staff did not open the bid and officially read out aloud the bid opening, which, that part was a staff mistake. They should have opened it and entered it in as a late bid and read it out loud. So that was, shouldn't have happened, but it did. And so we'll get more into the process with Kaplan and how we came to the Service Innovators. But first, I wanted to also capture the locations of bid tab, the primary sidewalk locations. As you can see, the contractors are on the left, sorry. And the thing that we want to point out here is on the top, the shovel cost, that's for all seven locations per push. That means per occurrence, per time they have to come. We have a one-inch trigger on these, so during operating hours for these buildings, they need to keep up with the sidewalk conditions to make them slip resistant and treated. And then we have a total number for the salt, per salting. So all seven locations, every time they come, is $452, for instance, on the Kaplan. Then you have the shovel and salt per occurrence totals. So that's kind of walking down, if you look at the bottom note, the annual estimate amount of 60,000 that we're asking for, for each of the four years, is determined by taking the two-year average number of call-in occurrences that we've had at 39 and 1/2, and multiplying that by the shovel and salt per occurrence total. We use the lowest bid in this court, in this case. We felt that that was an appropriate allowance that we could work within, because as we get into the second point, every snow event is different. This is managed by snow operations or snow command. And for instance, the cemetery and the city hall were two locations that were on that seven, list of seven buildings. And their work hours are obviously during the day, Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 4:30. So if we start getting snow at 6:00 PM on a Friday afternoon, when they arrange, when snow command arranges this, they're not going to be doing these two buildings, probably not until later in the weekend or prior, right before Monday morning, start of business. Unless we know and check the schedule that there's a meeting that night, or there's an open house of some sort, or burial, for instance, on a Saturday, then we will, we will send that crew out. But we're constantly monitoring, and we're always going for whatever we can do. Another thing is sometimes we can have a three-inch snow over 16-hour period. We're going to probably fight that one with salt. We're not going to have a lot of shoveling and pushing. So that is another way that we're going to save. So that's one of the reasons why we go, approach as a pay-as-you-go, like we've done, and it's been very successful. So getting on to the recommendations, staff met with Public Works Committee on October This whole process was discussed with Public Works. I will mention that also, as we talked about through the whole process with the Kaplan and the procedural irregularities that took place, it was a good part of the discussion that we had with the Public Works Committee. And we did identify the fact that our invitation to bid, as well as the bid specs, clearly state that the bids need to be, put in an envelope, sealed before the, and entered, you know, make it to the bid opening, whatever time that may be. But that's pretty consistent, it was consistent throughout. And as well as these contractors, especially Kaplan, was on that bid invitation from staff, which gets a copy of the same invitation that was put in the paper, sent to them, that clearly states that they need to have it in an envelope, sealed bid for the procedure. So through that whole discussion, but understanding that the fact that it was, we do have the ability through the process to waive irregularities. Public Works recommended city council approve apparent low bidder Kaplan contingent upon the city attorney's review and opinion on the waiver of the procedure irregularities with Kaplan's bid. So through that discussion, realizing that, yes, they did get there, and it was a little late. I think the key thing between that and the fact that it wasn't read out loud, and we're not following our procedure, the city attorney asked for, I mean, we reviewed everything, the bid spec, the city's procedure for public bid process and their purchasing process, as well as the bid. So took the city attorney through the whole process, and it was recommended that it would be not in the city's best interest to waive the apparent low bidder's procedural irregularities. So that's, which brings us to the next step, based on the Public Works Committee meeting, which recommends that the city council approve TSI and the lowest responsive responsible bidder and award TSI the contract for an annual estimated amount of $60,000. And I can take any questions.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions, comments? Dan?
I don't have, I don't have a question, but when I read this, it bothered me, kind of violated my sense of fair play. So I talked with Mike, either this, late this morning, this afternoon, and you know, come to find out that Kaplan has done this for, has had, been, provide this service quite successfully, and has been a high performer for how many years, Dan?
Three.
For three years.
They've been part of the pilot. They were one of our first contractors hired.
He's done a, done a great job. I think this, I think I sort of violated my sense of fair play. It also kind of violates my thing of, you take care of those that take care of yourself. I mean, I don't, I really, I won't say I don't understand, I actually disagree, I think, with the conclusion of the process. I believe it seems that we were culpable in denying this bid for the lowest bidder to the guy who's done it for three years. And then I heard he was, in talking with Mike, he said he was quite upset by it, as I would be if I had been doing this and I had submitted my bid and I just forgot to seal it? And then somebody told me about it, and I rushed over as soon as I could to seal it? And I was six minutes late, and you threw me out? I, I disagree with the, I disagree with, I, I'll say one more thing. I think it's a triumph of legal construction over common sense.
Let's find out about the legal particulars. Now you've made me curious.
Happy to. And this was something that, that we had, I had spoken with staff about. Happy to. And this was something that we had, I had spoken with staff about, and we went through the process. And initially, the first conversation I had was that it was not sealed, that the person, that Kaplan had been notified, had come in, and it was six minutes late. And I said, well, the bid documents clearly allow you to waive a procedural regularity, but did you follow the process of reading the bid openly? Because there was actually one of the contractors present for the bid opening. My concern, and that question was asked, and then we had a second conversation where it was confirmed that the bid was late, so it was not part of the public bid opening process. Now, it's one thing to waive a procedural regularity of the bidder, but if you have a particular process in place where another bidder was there, heard all of the bids being opened, that wasn't one of the bids, and were the city then to simply waive everything and approve it, my concern was that there could be a bid challenge, that the person that was there that relied on hearing that the bids were open and then the city were to approve this other bid. What I explained to staff is there's another process in place besides going through the bid process that allows you, as the city council, to reject all the bids and just approve whoever you want that's in the best interest of the city. And you've reserved that right in your purchasing policy. So beyond the bid process and waiving a procedural deficiency, you have the right to just reject the bids and approve who you want. And again, whatever bid you find is in the best interest of the city. So that is still an option. But I was concerned about the potential for a bid challenge with not just the procedural lateness, but then the public opening of the bids not being part of that process.
Dan, if it snows now, does someone actually shovel them, or is it under contract now?
It's not under, well, the contract will be started in December 1st is when.
So it is under contract or not?
We could probably call Kaplan, and yes, they would come out.
How much would it take to redo it, the bid process? In terms of effort and cost?
It would take just mostly time, just, and hopefully that they will be able to, I mean, typically when we reject all bids and then rebid it, we'll see an increase. You'll pay at the bid opening, typically. You'll see an increase in price.
But we can reject the bidding process and give it to whomever we feel. City council can do that.
I'm guessing there's a cost to the city, though, when we do that. I don't actually even necessarily mean a financial cost, but it seems to me that how we, I absolutely hear what you're saying, Jack, but it seems to me that how we deal with our vendors must be, must be, must be fair. And if we have guidelines to be followed, that we've got to apply the same rules to everybody. I mean, I'm sorry that we didn't open it, but that doesn't worry me as much as special dispensation when somebody has not followed our procedures, and I worry about that as a precedent going forward. So in this case, it was six minutes. Obviously, they made, they made a best effort to do it. But what if somebody said, well, you did somebody it six minutes? What's the difference? It's only four difference if it's four minutes. If mine was ten minutes late. I mean, how do you decide what dispensation that you give someone? In this case, you would say because they've served you well for three years.
It's just not reading it publicly is the bigger hurdle here. When one of the contractors was in the room, that's a bigger hurdle. But, I mean, at the end of the day, they were still the low bidder.
No, they weren't. Kaplan was.
That's what I mean. Kaplan was the low bidder.
Yeah, yeah, but he didn't get, he didn't get the bid.
Right. So there are some optics involved.
Yeah, it's because it wasn't read at the open.
Have we ever done this full rejection in your memory? Bob?
We've done full rejections. I don't know if we've done that at council meeting, though. Generally, we know that there's a problem early on, or it's way over budget or whatnot, so we rejected things before.
We just did it with the ravines. We only got one bid the last time we did the ravine project, and we rejected all those bids because we only had one.
Dan, who was the contractor that was in the room then for the opening?
I believe it was Snow Systems.
So the third.
The third, which is, they're really high.
Unfortunately.
Third is the highest.
Unfortunately, this isn't black and white because we have, the council has, I think maybe to better answer your question, Alderman Newman, the council has at various times said, the low bidder is X, but the lowest responsible bidder in the eyes of the city of Lake Forest is Y. Because for whatever reason, we didn't feel as though they could perform, or they met all the specifications or what have you. I think this is the first time where we've had a irregularity in the process itself. And part of the gray mushy part of it is how significant does the council feel as the irregularities are? Because you really have two. You had, they didn't put it in an envelope and seal it, which is one. And the second one is purely on the city, in that the individual who opened the bids should have read Kaplan's even after it came in in the sealed bid, six minutes late.
So the difference here is $1,700?
Less than one percent.
Dollars are insignificant just to make it work.
So I mean, do we want to go to war for $1,700?
That's, that's not it. It's, the war is on, do you want to take the bid away from the lowest bidder who's been your servant, successful servant, high-performing servant for three years? It's just, to me, it's a sense, it's, money makes absolutely no difference to me in this. And I'm likely going after an ant with an elephant gun, granted. However, it happens to violate my sense of fair play.
Right.
One other factor we should have maybe Dan expand on, we've talked about Kaplan having performed for the city for three years, and there was reference that we're very pleased with him. But as your last slide, you had three bullet points right at the bottom, and you did not articulate them, but I think it goes to the point, you know, what do we know about TSI? How comfortable are we with them to perform the services? Obviously, if they're not, you know, the appropriate one that we should be having for the service, you know, it's a no-brainer. But we did discuss that. And Dan, what are your comments on TSI and their responsible, their way of being a responsible bidder?
We did contact TSI and reviewed the contract and what they would be expected to be able to do. And we realized, we told them that this meeting was going to take place and that there would be no final decisions, and we'd let them know Tuesday. But they did walk us through that they're, they are a large company. They're not only headquartered in Wheeling, they do Chicagoland, they do parts of Indiana, Wisconsin, and Iowa. And their big forte is landscaping and then providing additional services like power washing, snow removal, shoveling, and a lot of commercial real estate properties. They do do some municipalities. I think they also do a lot of FedEx and Costco, as well as, I think Midway would be their municipal that would be the closest right now that I think they're doing.
And I think you checked some of the references.
The references all came back favorable, that they're a good company. And we talked to the person that would be responsible, and they understand the requirements that we're seeking. It was, put us in a position where we really, we didn't find anything through their references or through our investigation, a word out on the street that it's someone that you don't want to have doing your services. So.
Rob, Mayor. To Jack's point, looking at this vendor, they missed the sealing of the envelope. They then got there late. I thought they would have come to the bid opening, make sure that the bid got read. And the fact they didn't troubles me. So I'm not as concerned about the decision, for what it's worth.
You know, I just, I agree with Alderman Beidler that it's an unfortunate outcome, but I think when you start to bend these rules, where do you stop? I wish that this had been a more egregious example of not complying with the rules, but unfortunately, it is what it is. And where do you stop? And, you know, I sort of draw a parallel between missing a court date and a default judgment is entered against you. You know, I mean, there are penalties for making mistakes and missing minor, what we might consider minor rules. And there are severe consequences sometimes to doing that. And, I mean, we're all adults and businesses, and, you know, I think you have to comply with the rules as they are. I'm really concerned about setting a precedent here, and I do think it's unfortunate. And I could understand Kaplan being unhappy with the process, but hopefully they'll rebid next year and maybe can regain the business would be.
It's a four-year contract.
It's a four-year contract.
Well, four years from now, next time, yeah.
The only comment I'd make is, I mean, it's really because we didn't read the bid out loud, right? That, that was, if we had read that, and granted, they weren't there to force that from happening. So we're a little bit culpable too, as on a process, and they are too, on a little traffic ticket. And to make it clean, you know, I think the only way to reset it would be to redo it. That's not an option because we think the prices are too high. We got to, we got to stay with where we're at based on probably exposure, based on our actions, not on theirs. And if it's a big lift to do it again, and we have some time.
I would say that their not reading the bid was, you can't really say it's our fault because it was based on something they failed prior to that. So.
They're connected, yeah.
That's fair.
Right, but they're sequential. They're not, they're not independent.
Good point.
What a wonderful kettle of fish for a second-year business law case. If we were to rebid, we have two bidders now, everybody knows, are right near each other. Isn't that reasonable grounds to think, no, we're not necessarily going to get, per se, see higher bids, materially higher bids?
There's, it's all, it's all dependent on them. That's just been our case where we've rejected bids in the past and asked them to rebid. So it's, they see what the other higher bids are, they see what the low bid saw what he left on the table. He's coming back. He might not try and get to the third highest bidder, but he's going to probably bring it up.
Do we have that option available with the timing, not knowing when the next snowfall's going to occur?
So what would be the rebidding timeframe? We didn't quite, is it a month?
Well, the public bid process is 10 days. We would put it probably out after the holiday, so it would probably go out next week. And then another 10 days, it gets you into the, we could have another bid opening. And then, it's usually about a month. And then, and then from there, we'd have to get to the next city council meeting, which would be.
Could you expedite this at all? Or what's your 21-day snow forecast?
Yeah, if this happened in August, I would have just rejected the bids and rebid it probably, but.
If we rebid, I suppose we could go to Kaplan and ask him for whatever, two, three-week extension.
Yeah, it's up to them. I mean, they don't owe us anything at this point. It would be.
Well, except, you know, they have been and would be, they have been and presumably would be participants in the, in the bid process.
I would hope so.
Well, we have a full range of opinions. I have a thought, I mean.
I think the only other concern, and I'd have to consult with legal counsel here, is is that in theory, if you're going to reject bids, you're really opening it up to everybody. So even people who didn't bid it the first time could bid it on the second time. So we have to at least go the 10 days and so forth. So you're talking a minimum of two, maybe three weeks with the holidays upon us. I think the option for the city council is, do you want to have a special meeting to take this under advisement so that we could move this along? Because I'd really like to have it in place before Christmas. Because I'm pretty certain it's going to snow sometime soon. And so I guess the real question is, do you want to waive the bidding process, or reject all bids, I'm sorry, and go with Kaplan? Do you want to go with Service Innovators? Or do you want to think about a special meeting to reconsider this? And we will move it as quickly as possible. I'm just saying practically, you're talking about two to three weeks.
So that's what, mid-December?
Yep.
In the danger zone.
I think Bob hit it. You either, we either award it to whomever Dan is recommending at this meeting, or we reject the bids and we award it to Kaplan.
Right.
Tonight.
Correct.
There's no sense, there's no sense, there's no sense doing it. Does Kaplan deserve it based on whatever, including the lowest bid? Or quite frankly, the other arguments, is that not necessarily valid? And we need, we have, we don't want to establish a precedent and we do with TSI or whoever. That to me, that to me is the two options. And you know which one I recommend, so.
Yeah. Well.
Rob, are you, are you taking more comments?
Yeah.
I know I spoke once to this, but I would just say, and this is on a more general, in my own mind, particularly not as a lawyer, I'm a big fan of listening to our lawyers. And I think we have great confidence in Julie Tavendorf. And if her recommendation is in this case, I mean, we all understand that it's regrettable. We wish it hadn't happened the way it did. That said, it's winter. We got to, we got to get this job done. And my sense is, in this case, to, and what I will vote to do is to support the recommendation given to us by our city attorney, because I frankly trust her to understand how these things work. So that's, that's my, and I didn't stress that enough before, which is why I felt I needed, but now I'm.
Well, why don't we, somebody, I think we've all heard it. We've sort of all got our thoughts, because then we should just have a motion and we'll try that out.
I'll make the motion that we accept the bid as recommended from the Public Works Committee, which was the second low bidder of TSI. Is that what they are?
I'll second that.
For a four-year.
Four-year contract.
Four-year snow and ice service contract. Is there a second?
Yes, I second.
This is a roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Newman.
Nay.
Alderman Rommel.
Aye.
Alderman Reisberg.
Nay.
Alderman Preschler.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Sixie, two-nay, motion carries.
Wasn't a war?
I didn't do public comment on this.
There we go again. We don't do anything right now.
We've got to consult our attorney.
Oh, yes, we do.
Last item is our favorite committee report, always.
Controversy-free?
Controversy-free, is from our beloved golf committee in the Deer Path Golf Course.
I've got a two-part, get some help from my colleague Alderman Beidler on this one. But the first part is, is we, as the plane approaches, final approach for our good friend Bob Kiley's retirement, it'll be on us before we know it. Certainly, retirement parties and dinners are nice, but they're over the next day. And so in looking for a more permanent recognition of a wonderful 27, 28-year career, some conversations have been occurring. And I think a recent conversation was between Park District Director Sally Swarthout and my good friend Prue Beidler. And I think the idea popped up that we're going to name something after Bob. And I think the idea that came out was to rename the new patio at Deer Path Golf Course in honor of Bob Kiley. I think it's a great metaphor because when we first got the bids to redo the patio, they were about double what we expected. And Bob marshaled forces within the city staff, along with a lot of help from Sally and a lot of other people, and got the patio done in-house largely, under budget, and opened by Memorial Day two years ago. So I think that's a great metaphor reflective of the career of Bob Kiley. And I think it'll give a chance, a chance for Bob. He's going to stay in the community. He's a regular member and player at Deer Path Golf Course. So I can't think of a better, better way to, and I know he doesn't like a lot of attention, but I just, I can't think of a better way to acknowledge our gratitude for 27 years of service. So.
So may I have a motion? You forgot one.
We don't know what the mechanics are about.
Gripping metaphoric opportunity, which was hoisting one at the patio.
Well, the bad news is, even though we want to rename the patio after you, you're not going to get free drinks. not going to get free drinks, so.
What uses it?
So this is a fairly new idea and I don't know what we need to do to.
We own the golf course, we can take a, a motion. I think just a voice vote. Do we need an official vote?
It's not on the agenda, so it's, you know, if you want to give direction to do that, that's.
Yeah, I think we just give.
Then we would, we can do what we want.
Yeah, we can do what we want.
Well, I talked to Biddy earlier and she thought whatever we needed to do would come forth on the December 3rd meeting, but I wanted to announce it tonight and ask for the council's support when it does come forward.
So, so we, we'll give you a sense of enthusiastic support and then we'll see something formal in a, that's fine, okay.
For the second part of this piece of the agenda, first of all, are there any comments from other Aldermen about this idea? Okay.
Well done.
Well, I give all the credit to Prue. I think it was the idea that popped into her head.
Actually, Duchesne might have been involved in this as well. I believe, I believe there was, pretty much everybody who heard about this idea was, hooray, this is a great idea. We were going to keep it a secret, so I'm sorry that that didn't seem to work out.
It was the world's worst municipal secret ever.
I don't know. I think it was a secret for a few days at least, but anyway, we didn't pull it off.
Duchesne is often suspected.
No, I'm not blaming Duchesne.
The second part of this agenda item, I'm going to turn it over to Prue.
I'll answer to that. I've answered worse.
She's going to talk about our continuing fundraising efforts.
Yeah, so you are, you in this room and, and, and up here, and those of you at home are about to get a, some, a mailer, everyone in town is getting this mailer. And speaking of Sally Swarthout and the Parks and Rec Department, they, and Sally, this was done in-house, am I right? We have, we just have some extraordinary staff. This is, this is an amazingly can-do staff and so this, I believe we call this a trifold? Is this a trifold, is that right? So fancy, very fancy. So aren't you impressed that we have staff that can do trifolds? But so this is the size, when it, when it's big, it starts out, you know, it'll be in a, in a regular envelope. Renovate, good Deer Path Golf Course renovation project phase two. Needless to say, it's a, it's a fundraising pitch and it gives you all the detail and it's in one kind of easy place. You can go to the website, it's all there too. You can pledge online. We were anxious to send it out at this time of year because this project in theory is going to be done by 2020, December 31st, 2020. So if you want to do a pledge over three years, this is a great year to start and this is when a lot of people do their, do their contributions. I would note that this very document on this, I don't even know if any pictures are being taken, but let me just imagine that they are, that somebody's seeing this. Your renovation project form lists an opportunity in honor or memory of someone and, and obviously, hopefully many of us will be doing this in honor, our contribution in honor of Bob or a contribution in honor of Bob, but it can be done for anybody. So a lot of us have people who don't need more stuff in their life, but who would not mind being honored about something. I think actually the mayor's wife did an in honor of gift for him for a birthday, as I recall, which I'm sure he, he appreciated mightily. So, you know, think about the ways this could be, this could be helpful because it, we definitely have big plans and we, and we need help. And we need help at every, at every level. If you, if you want to be a big helper, we're thrilled and obviously Mrs. Hughes gave us a huge boost in that regard. We've just begun the, then there's a picture in here, actually, the halfway house is, is the ground's broken. Some of you, I think, were there for the groundbreaking, very exciting. And I ran into somebody at church the other day and she said, I need to hear what's happening at the golf course. And when I told her, she was one of the early people to support this, I said, breaking ground on the halfway house. So every, every year, there's something new for people to see and it's, and it's thrilling, it's a great project. And so I urge you to take part in it and, and look for this in your, it'll come out, you know, it'll be a plain envelope, but it says Parks and Rec and it's a great piece, kind of a good summary piece. But you can do everything online if you want. Okay. Is that it? Did I cover it, Tim?
No, thank you.
Good, okay. That's the envelope. Hold up the envelope just in case anybody wonders. There you go. I just want you to know what to look for. Okay.
Is it stamped?
It has.
No checking.
Deer Path Golf Course renovation project is the.
I mean, do you have to post it on it?
No, you give it to me. I'll deliver it myself.
So what she's asking is, does the business reply envelope have a stamp on it? That would not be best practice because you do not get 100% back. This isn't like a wedding invitation.
However, you can drop it in the city box.
Well, that's true. You could, you could save a stamp.
She's prepaid.
The one that goes out, but not the return.
He's talking about their business reply envelope inside.
In other words, if you're doing this, you have to put a stamp on it, Jack.
Or put it in the city.
Not at mine.
We put this in the city box, right?
Okay, could this be considered in the weeds? I mean, I think we're done.
Where being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We are adjourned.